As we're at my standing and we'll get the meeting started, I'll ask Commissioner Langston to lead us in the pledge and Chief Harry to say a prayer for us.
Good day to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and make decisions for the city, Lord. We just asked that you would be with each and every one of us and help us through this difficult time, Lord. We know that you are still on your throne and that you are in charge. You know what's going on. This didn't catch you by surprise. We just asked that you would help our people to not panic and just be safe. We ask that you would be with our commissioners, help them to make wise decisions, Lord, and lead in this city. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And before we get into the consent agenda, we, I'd like to make, okay, you're gonna make me turn this on, okay. Make a statement about the coronavirus COVID-19 that we're all very aware of. And we'd just like to ask you to pay attention to the experts. Don't listen to your neighbors or your friends. If you want some information, go to the proper place to get it. And it's a very serious time right now, and we need to take it serious. We can beat it, but we certainly got to take this very seriously. I've got a letter that will go out to our Facebook page and as well as our website. We'll forward it to the Chamber of Commerce. They'll disseminate it to all their members. And just need to let everybody know the city's doing everything we can do to make sure it doesn't get here. So it goes, Dear fellow citizens, we are in a serious time in our country and city. I'm asking you to take the COVID-19 virus precautions that the experts have recommended. Rely on the Gulf County Emergency Operations Center Facebook page, website, floridahealth.gov, CDC.gov, and of course, the City of Port St. Joe website, Facebook. Our friends mean well, but do not go to them for updates. City Hall will remain open right now. We would encourage you to transact your business there by the telephone or Dropbox or online, either way. So it would be better if we could do that. Our grocery stores remain open with plenty of necessities. Please do not panic or hoard. Think of others and be socially responsible. It is important to protect our elderly and most vulnerable population. Lastly, exercise your due diligence and heed the recommendation of the experts to sanitize to keep yourself and your family safe. The City of Port St. Joe, Gulf County, the Florida Department of Health, Ascension Sacred Heart Hospital, and our healthcare providers are all prepared. Working together, we can be the safest city in the state of Florida, sincerely Rex Posette, Mayor. So with that, we have Sarah Hines here and this Pippen here from the Department of Health. I'd like to ask him to make a statement. And then after that, I'd like Commissioner Lowry to bring everyone up to speed on the Governor's press conference that happened just a little while ago. So Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me on this? Am I good?
I don't know, maybe he could go on.
It says it's on.
There you go.
Good? Okay. Thank you. My name's Sarah Hines, Administrator for the Florida Department of Health, Gulf and Franklin. We just recently left a Franklin County Commission meeting, and it went very well. Lot of support. We're all talking in one voice, just like we would here and how we have done in previous emergency situations. So I just wanted to share the message that I shared with them so that we're all consistent. The truth of the matter is that we are dealing with a new virus, right? And it has caused panic in some areas, but hopefully communities can stop running out of their toilet paper. And luckily Franklin and Gulf folks are staying calm and following the guidance from the Florida Department of Health and the CDC, which is what we've been trying to educate this entire time. And I think we tend to have a little more seasoned experience, if you will, in emergency situations. And we all have a great partnership with each other. So when I, I think when people start seeing these massive closures, they start to worry about how bad the disease actually is. But that's really just a strategy to limit the spread of the disease. While we're still learning about this new virus, COVID-19, which is a family of coronaviruses, we are seeing in the studies that about 80% of the folks that get the virus will have mild to no symptoms. But what they can do is spread that virus to the other 20%. And that's what we're focused on, is our at-risk population, our older population, which they define as folks over 60, people with compromised immune systems, people with underlying medical conditions, heart disease, diabetes, lung disease. These are the folks that we're trying to make sure have the medical coverage that they would need at that time if they became ill. And if we have any type of mass surge of cases in our area, say we were thinking like in terms of just getting the virus over with, kind of like back in the day when somebody had chicken pox and you sent all our kids to the kid with the chicken pox. We're not trying to do that because it will cause unnecessary panic and unnecessary suffering. So the folks that need the critical care the most might not be able to get it if we just had a surge of cases. So what we're trying to do is keep our medical system of care manageable, as well as our society still operating. And I don't know if you guys, but I'm really not interested in living in any type of conditions that remind us of the early days of Hurricane Michael. So societies are using this term. We're trying to educate it into community notice flattening the curve. And rather than seeing like a surge or spike of cases, we'd rather see a gradual number over a longer period of time, just a smaller amount of cases over time. It's a longer process, but gradual cases over time actually save lives and in turn can help keep our medical system of care at its capacity to serve Gulf County. And I get asked a lot, you know, what are we going to get cases? It is possible. I don't want to reassure you that we won't. What we know is that this is an evolving situation. But if we take the steps that we need to implement mitigation strategies for our communities, we're really sitting ourselves in a better position. There's a lot of guidance that we're sending out to different stakeholders from the CDC. And one of the best documents that I have, and that Pippen actually sent out yesterday, sorry, we call her Pippen, Jessie Pippen, our Public Information Officer, was something called the implementation of mitigation strategies for communities with local COVID transmission. And it walks you through the different stages that communities can reference in terms of how to respond to a community transmission. So when you look at it, the columns, it will show none to minimal cases, minimal to moderate and substantial. And it has different types of populations and what they need to be focused on. So individuals and families, schools, childcare, you know, Jim Norton's been calling me on the daily, assisted living facilities and nursing homes, what they're working on, workplaces, community and faith-based organizations. So we all play a role in this. And this is really helpful to make sure that we're in a good position. We are. And when you look at the first column and even some of the other ones, we're setting ourselves in a better prepared situation. But we also have to be mindful that we have to balance that with mandated efforts that are happening statewide. And so it is a kind of a delicate balance. All of these tactics, again, are just simply to slow down the number of cases that we get over time and again, avoiding that surge. So that's the message we've been trying to send. And it's all about keeping our at-risk populations safe. So again, it spreads like the flu. It's a respiratory illness. We continue to share those hygiene and respiratory care messages that you have in your letter. We do have an update on the Franklin, I'm sorry, I'm just in Franklin, on the Gulf and Franklin, if you will, in emergency operation Facebook pages. It's going to be updated daily. We were waiting on the orders that just came out from the Governor to add that information. But what we're planning to do is every time we have that update, once a day, we'll copy it and send it out in a briefing update to all of our distribution lists, all of our partners in that DL. And it's a huge group because we're small counties, so we kind of know everyone, right? And it's an easier way to get the message out versus the larger counties who are just relying on, you know, some media outlets. We include everyone. Of course, we include Tim on it, but everyone involved that would need to know the message. So that's kind of our update for now. We're still asking from a testing standpoint, we're still getting a lot of questions on that. You can call your healthcare provider first. That's ideal for us. If you're symptomatic, to determine if you need to be tested. And if they think they have COVID-19, they really need to call before going to the office. Don't just show up so that the provider can take the precautions to prevent exposing other folks. In some cases, that's the parking lot. You may have mentioned that last time. But it's just, it's not meant to be scary. It's just meant to be, it's just a precaution because we really need to keep our healthcare workers safe, right? They can't be home sick. They won't be able to respond to the situation. And so we need them to be healthy, as well as other patients. Review your signs and symptoms, travel history. Your physician will evaluate you for all possible causes of respiratory illness before they get down to them because it could be COVID testing. To be prioritized for testing, patients really do need to meet stated criteria. So if we're not just setting up shop for anybody who wants to get tested, can get a test, we really want you to see your provider first and make sure you can rule out all of their illnesses first. The turnaround time for tests, right now, I've been told from our state labs, generally around 24 to 48 hours. Commercial labs, which do have testing capabilities, usually within three to four days. That timeframe can change due to the demand that you're seeing around the state. If you don't have a provider, we can provide you with a list of providers in the area. We are utilizing our federally qualified health managers, PanCare, and we want Hitchcock Medical for serving those who are underinsured or uninsured or do not have a provider. It's sort of our protocol that we're following. We're seeing some more information on mass gatherings, right? Boy, that was interesting. It went from 1,000 on Friday to 250 suggested and then 50, and now it's down to 10. So we're trying to make sense of that in terms of how that impacts our community. And it's all about just keeping that safe distancing. And speaking of which, here we go. You know how we passed out flyers on hand washing last time? We got a new one. What does social distancing look like? We keep using it, but what does it really mean? And so in addition to the hygiene practices, just changing those daily habits, because we're trying to keep our at-risk population safe, right? I keep saying that over and over again. But I'm seeing some stores now operating during certain times so that the elderly population can get in and shop, whereas the rest of the public community can operate in a different timeframe. Working with your employers, having flexible shift plans and telecommunication opportunities if available, maintaining that social distancing. So they keep talking about that six feet distance, and that's important to, if somebody is infectious, keeping that distance to keep everyone safe. Avoiding travel to areas of active outbreaks. Definitely want to be paying attention to that. And we certainly want to make sure that visitors that are coming in are healthy and they're following the protocols that we have in place. We've been working real closely with Kelly Gompin on this from the TBC. Avoiding, you know, certain events, but at this point, they're mainly cancel that this time, or at least that's what we're following. And then on the back end, it's just the other precautions that you can take, just easy to read and understand. Just general prevention messages. I think that's, am I missing something? No? Okay.
Questions from city staff, citizens, anyone have questions for Sarah? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Oh, hey, Ms. Lynn.
Hi, Sarah. Just wondering if any staffs on testing for Gulf Bay or Leon County?
I'm so sorry. I don't know why I don't keep starting with this. Testing capabilities are available with all of our healthcare partners. So we're not worried about testing. Here are rumors, we're not worried about testing. We do want you to work with your provider. There are still no cases in Gulf or Franklin at this time. But I'm so glad you mentioned that because we're supposed to be talking this direction.
You're fine.
If you go to floridahealth.gov, you actually, there's coronaviruses at the top. You can click on it, and it will show you the cases that are positive in the counties. But there's also a dashboard now available that's pretty neat looking, and it shows the state of Florida. And if you're highlighted, you can click on it in some kind of way, and it's updated, I think, twice a day. And it will tell you the number of cases. So we can all follow that dashboard together. If we get a positive case, we don't have any positive cases, just to, you know, stop the rumor control at this point. If we do get a positive case, communication is everything to us. It's known as a presumptive positive. And that just means that it's been tested in Florida through our state or commercial laboratories. And then it gets sent off to the CDC for confirmation. So it'd be a confirmed case. If we get a presumptive positive case, we're not going to wait for it to be confirmed at the CDC. We're going to go ahead and act on it and start doing what public health people do every day, which obviously people didn't realize it. But we do contact tracing to make sure that level of risk of exposure is as minimal as possible. And so, yeah, the presumptive positive case will be issued in a press release format, and we'll make sure it gets sent to all of our distribution partners. Danny Bolden always sends it out to a big group as well. And so we'll make sure everybody's aware of what's going on and give you the information that you need to the extent we're allowed. Yeah, go for it.
Hey, sorry. So Jessie, they're then Public Health Information Officer for Gulf and then Deputy for Franklin. And just to really, I want to stress that we are trying to be as transparent and informative as possible. We, you know, can't help keep people safe if everyone's consuming themselves with misinformation. So like you said in your letter, thank you, call us, email us, reach out to us, go to the sources. Because unfortunately, you know, people do like to talk. They do like to consume themselves with things that they think, you know, is true. And we truly just want to, you know, make sure we're transparent and we're not keeping secrets to any capacity. Like Sarah said, as soon as we have a positive case, she already has her distribution list created of all the leaders of all of you to get that information out. So you will be the first today.
Yeah, that's my goal, is to make sure you guys know about it, and then we send out the press release. So we're all consistent in the message and you know all the information.
Good. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just, I came from the Senior Center.
Yes.
And there are a lot of seniors that are self-isolating right now, doing what they're supposed to be.
Sure.
But they are food insecure. And so they're not going to the Senior Center. And we're only serving meals on wheels two times per week. So I just want to give a heads up that there are a bunch of seniors out there who are self-isolating that don't have the food that they need. And just to put that out there so that we can be proactive before it gets too late for some people and they have to come out when they're sick, or they have to get in a crowd that puts them at risk. And because they are food insecure.
Yeah. And what we can do is work with the food distribution folks and see if we can do some sort of delivery services for those. I know that's happening in Franklin now, so I can just do some sort of follow-up on that.
Okay.
The other part with social distancing for our elderly, that doesn't mean emotional distancing. So we do need to call them and just check on them. And I know there's something called a KISS program maybe happening in Northport, St. Joe, where they do a call-down to certain folks. And so it's just maintaining our communication with our population.
That's good to know. And also, just with that being said, two days a week, look after your neighbors, look after your relatives, check on them, make sure, you know, just be socially aware, I guess you would say.
Right. And the food distribution from the school side, I know Jim Norton is working on that right now and just setting up some strategies so that those kids have that lunch every day during that second week that was mandated to close.
So kind of highlight, everybody's doing everything they can for prevention. There are plenty of test kits available. There are plenty of test sites. If you think you're sick, go to your physician, your healthcare provider. If you don't have one, call the Department of Health, and they can set you up with one and get you tested. So I think that's where we're hearing a lot of rumors that we don't have this or not doing that. But I'm glad here we are. Anybody else? Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, Sarah, absolutely.
I want to ask Commissioner Lowry, who listened to the Governor's press conference, just to go over a few highlights of that and what's coming down from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I listened to the Governor's press conference. It was at 10:30 this morning, and about four items were listed. He didn't go in great depth, and we don't have an order on it yet, but wanted to mention them to everybody in this meeting. Restaurants, what they're wanting to do is a 50% max capacity limited to a 50%. What he's asking restaurants to do is spread out tables and view as individuals as possible at those tables, but limiting that to a 50% max and encouraging takeout food. Bars, nightclubs, closed for 30 days, starting the day at 5 o'clock, 5:00 p.m. today, bars and nightclubs. And beaches, he didn't close the beaches, but he's limiting to groups of 10 persons and then spreading out. So he's asking for that social distancing, but 10, groups of 10, and then maybe 20 foot down, you could have another group of 10. And then also just to note, closing universities and we'll begin online classes or remote classes. And I think he's working right now with those universities. But again, we haven't received or seen an order on any of it at this time.
Clarify the bars and nightclubs here. He is closing them permanently for 30 days? Is that what he's saying?
That's what he said, 30 days permanently, or 30 days now. I do know we have a lot of package stores in town.
Yeah.
So he didn't specify anything on that. So probably be more in that order that he signed.
Yeah, I just misheard it, I guess. I thought you meant they had to close the business at 5:00 every day. But he's closing them.
I got it. For 30 days period, starting at 5:00 today.
Got you. Okay, all right. So that's where we are, folks. And it's very serious. And I think if we take it that way, we're going to be okay. And just be aware, all I can say. So anything else on that? We'll move on to our consent agenda, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3rd. Everyone has a chance to go over those. And if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. All in favor, aye. Aye-ho, same sign, motion to pass three of. Next item on the agenda is Planning Board Recommendations. I'll go over those, and then we'll get into the city attorney. The Planning Board recommended a final plat approval for Windmark Village Center East. They recommended, and all of these are 4-0 votes, they recommended ordinance 569, which is voluntary annexation request, and they recommended ordinance 570, small-scale plan amendment. So that's on the agenda for information. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. I had three things on the agenda today, but two of them kind of basically canceled out. Yesterday, I received a request via email from the attorney, David Theriak, who represents the development company with regards to ordinance 569 voluntary annexation request and ordinance 570, which was a small-scale plan amendment. He requested that we push back the first readings of those two ordinances to our next meeting, which would be on April 7th.
Okay. So you need a motion to continue that? We'll have to re-advertise and do all of the things that are necessary. So in that case, I'll need a motion to, is it a motion, you'd like to continue it or a motion to, I'm not sure what.
Continue it to April 7th meeting.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to continue. We might as well do 569 and 570. They're both the same.
Correct.
Okay. Motion to that effect.
I got a little bit of discussion if you want to make a motion, Commissioner.
I'm motion to that.
Okay, we'll continue it. Okay, and you second?
I'll second. My only, if you don't mind, my only question was to make sure they, since they requested, excuse me, since they requested to, I guess, not hear it today, and we've got to re-advertise that they pay the cost to re-advertise.
That's been reiterated to them, that it's contingent upon them contacting the city and making sure that that fee or the cost of the publication is paid.
Okay, very good. Second.
Okay.
Let them know that we, the city, was ready, willing, and able to go forward with this today, and it was their choice to continue with.
Correct. While we're in discussion, and this was the annexation of the property out by Northwest Florida Child Development Center, and of course, they came to us. I reached out to Chairman Quinn and another county commissioner last week to explain to them what we're trying to do. And we just want to help the city when it helps the city, it helps the county at the same time. I think there was a little, maybe a little misinformation. And so once we clear that up, I think we'll, I think we can go forward with it. So we sent a letter to them, to the chairman of the county commission, explaining to them why we want to do it. It was voluntary annexation request and all the above, so that they would have that for their records anyway. And so I think we'll be okay with it. I think they'll be okay with it. So anyway, any more discussion? All in favor, aye. All in favor, same sign, motion to pass three of.
The other thing I have on the agenda, Mayor, is Resolution 2020-02. It deals with the coronavirus. Is there anything you'd like to say about this?
Well, you heard everything that we probably need to say. I think the public knows that the city is serious about protecting their population. That's part of our statutory job as commissioners. And so I thought it would be a good idea to have a declaration of public health emergency, just in case, you know, we need certain things and supplies or things we have to do. So that's where we are. So I'll need a motion to read Resolution 2020-02.
Still move.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Langston, second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lowry. And any discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye. Same sign, motion to pass three of. Yes, sir.
Resolution 2020-02, a resolution with the City Commission of the City of Port St. Joe for all city employees who work during a state of Florida, during a state of emergency or Florida declaration, a public health emergency is declared by Governor Ron DeSantis, Executive Order 20-51, on March 1st, 2020, for the coronavirus, which is COVID-19.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to new business, and that is the first item. Jim, you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, sir. The first item we have is the final plat approval for Windmark Village Center East. It has been heard before, your planning board, as was noted before, as a recommendation. It did get a favorable recommendation for approval. We also have Mr. John Skorowski that is here from Dewberry, if you should have any questions in reference to the final plat approval.
Anybody? Anybody got questions? Anybody, anybody got questions? Windmark Village Center East, everybody good with that? Okay. Is there a motion for final approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, final approval, second?
I second.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Discussion, anyone?
I have something.
Okay, well, concerning this?
Yeah.
Okay, forward.
Thank you. I think it's great that we're expanding that area. I hope it brings in a lot of people. In the past, there have been some drainage issues for existing homes that were on the other side of Windmark, so I'm wondering, and since you have Dewberry here, I guess, can they talk a little bit about how they're going to mitigate and make sure that draining works well, because at county meetings, I know that that had been a problem with the folks on the other side of Windmark.
Yeah, sure. If you guys wouldn't mind responding to that. State your name, please, and sign here.
All right, John Skorowski with Dewberry.
Jason Scovar with St. Joe. So regarding to the stormwater for Village Center East, which is what we're here for today, to get the final plat approval, we've received permits through the state, DEP, Northwest Quarter Water Manager District. We have stormwater treatment facilities within the project limits to provide treatment and attenuation. It's collected within the roadways via drainage inlet and pipe conveyed to the pond, held back to attenuate, which is discharging pre-development storm rates. So we have had a review by the city's engineer, and it does meet all the criteria. I'm not aware of the specific areas outside of our project limits that have stormwater issues. Be happy to take a look at those areas if need be.
Okay, very good. If you wouldn't mind, just for the public, explain where Village Center East is in relation to the entrance to Windmark. Is that the areas that are, right when you enter, cleared on the right and the left?
Yes, sir. Right there at the main entrance on Good Morning Street, lots on the left and right.
Yeah, just let those out of that. Okay. Very good. All right, guys, thank you very much, and with that, there's no more discussion.
I just have one more thing. So the city engineer, that we call the city engineer, is also with Dewberry, correct? Is that correct?
So when it comes to plat reviews, as your engineer, we don't review those, those are reviewed at your staff level. Development orders, that type of thing typically is handled at your staff level. It's very rare that we, as your city engineer, review it unless it's, I mean, there's probably been a case or two, I think the Gateway Apartments was one we helped review. And most of that is generally related to water and sewer, those stations and water lines, that kind of thing, just in low capacity or not, but very rarely we get involved as your city engineer on development orders or plat planning.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye-ho, same sign, most passed three of. Good luck, may see some.
Thank you.
See something going on.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner, the next couple, I'll be talking about purchase items that we're looking at for the Public Works Department, a couple scag mowers, a truck, and a diesel pump. On that note, too, we actually lost our inmates for the next 30 days, so this is a big deal to us, that we're having to scale back our operations to our core functions, water, sewer, police, fire. We're going to do everything we can to make sure our parks are maintained, our restrooms are kept sanitary products, but it will be a challenge for the next 30 days. But this will, some of the items that we need are right in front.
The, there's three items. Are they all in the budget?
Yes, sir, they are.
All in the budget, okay, we planned for them. And so as far as diesel pumps go, John, this will be, we'll have two good diesel pumps at that, after.
One and a half.
One's the older one, I know.
That's right, yeah.
I think we all know it.
This will end up being the workhorse for the next 10 years, George.
Right, that's one used on Clifford Sims now.
That's correct, right.
Yeah, okay. If we approve these, when will we get them in?
I know the truck is probably three months or better. The pump is six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Scags are probably your narrowest time, you know, a week or two.
Right, okay, all right.
All leads to be purchased under a state contract.
Correct, okay. All right, well, let's just have a motion to approve all three at one time.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Can I say something?
Second, discuss.
Yes, I'll take one discussion. I just want to ask John to explain to everybody what that pump on Clifford Sims, what he's actually doing, because I've been having people come ask me questions, they want to know why it's so loud or whatever. Just explain to them why we have that pump there, why.
The diesel pump on Clifford right now is for the purpose of moving the sewage from Clifford Sims' location down to Hodgson Street. So it's on a float tree system, so it does, it comes on and will go off. There's been a few cases, I think, where it hasn't actually turned off, those were electrical issues with the pump. We've corrected those, not saying it wouldn't happen again, because it is an old pump, but we feel like we've got that managed now and put in the box. So that pump is moving sewage from that basin, you know, down to the next.
Okay, I just want you to explain that to the people in that area, because they need to understand how important that is, as far as having that pump there. It may make a little noise every now and then, but we maintain that and.
Right, and we do expect to deliver the electric pump the board purchased, you know, several weeks ago or a month or so ago, by the end of this month, so within the next two weeks, that noise will go away.
Okay, I appreciate it, John.
Very good. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye-ho, same sign, most passed three of. May the purchase. All righty, I'm next on the agenda is 2020 census. That's gotten lost with the coronavirus in the news now, but it's so, so important, and we need to tell our friends and neighbors and everybody, when they get this letter in the mail, please fill it out, send it in. All of our funding from state, federal sources are based on our census. If we got a low census, we're going to get a low, we're just not going to get what we need when we need it. So if you can't fill it out, they will have folks coming door-to-door. The federal government has hired folks to go door-to-door, and please welcome them in and make sure they know how many folks are living with you, if that's the case. So I just want to make folks aware of how important it is to be counted, only happens every 10 years, so we need to be counted, so pass that word on.
All righty. Just one other thing to remind everybody, we do have the NERDA workshop next Tuesday at 5 o'clock here, that is in reference to the stormwater grant that we received.
Okay, all righty, anything else, Jim? Ms. Cheryl?
Just remind everyone that qualifying begins tomorrow at noon, that would be March the 18th, last through the following Wednesday, the 25th at noon, for city commission seats for Group 3 and 4.
Okay, and I understand if the governor closes all state agencies, that we'll have to make a decision about extending that qualifying period in conjunction with when they reopen all the agencies, so something also to be thinking about. Any of you fellows have anything if we need to discuss? Okay, citizens to be heard, come right up.
Kristen McElroy, Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe. Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping you can help me. I looked at my old, you know, utility, my bill through the city, and garbage, you know, we went from 1865 with garbage to 2015, which was $1.50 more. And I have talked about the fact that, you know, we need BCC to honor their agreement as far as picking up yard debris, especially now. People are trying to get out and do the best they can, me included. So I arrived home to see that BCC picked up half of my yard debris, but not the other half. And so I'm going to ask that there are weeks that I don't have yard debris, and there are weeks and months you have yard debris. And so I'm getting charged regardless, and I need them to do their job. I don't care who BCC is, I don't care who proprietor is, I've said that over and over again. I'm not sure how he got the contract, because he was more expensive, but regardless, I need him to do his job.
That's our number one complaint with our new service. I'm with you, mine hasn't been picked up two months, and it's not a very big pile, but they do, and Jim worked with it, short of, I don't know, talking to the attorney about what we need to do, but I wholeheartedly agree with you that it needs to be done. And in some areas, they've always, five or six neighbors have put their debris in one pile, so they wouldn't have all these little piles. Well, when they do that, it's too big a pile, BCC says four by four by four, so we're, I told them, you're just going to have to put it in a smaller pile. But, yeah, we're aware of it, and good gracious, I hope soon we can get them on board with that.
Well, I hope so, too, because I'm kind of tired of talking about it, and I'm going to give the clerk my address, show the difference, we're paying. And again, I don't care who Mr. Townell is, I don't care who he's related to, I care that he does his job and he honors this community in doing his job.
Absolutely.
The other thing that I have for you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to go ahead and hand this to you. It goes back to what I'd asked for a few weeks back, and that's disclosure forms for whoever we do business with. Now, Mr. Albritton, and I know you may be tired of hearing about it, not only did he have a business relationship with our county attorney, Mr. Jeremy Oback, he was also working and is working for the county as an attorney. Over the last two and a half years, Mr. Albritton has made $173,915. That isn't a conflict of interest, while he was sitting, paid, what was it, $54,000 by the city. I want our money back. And I'm going to dog this all the way, all the way. This is a clear conflict of interest, I want to see some disclosure forms. Mr. Lowry has a partnership with Mr. Rish, Ralph Rish.
Okay, Chris.
No, no, I'm not doing stuff.
You're, look, if you have a personal problem with folks, you need to take that up with them.
This is $173,000 of a problem.
In a very positive way, and I'm not going to go back and rehash dirty laundry anywhere.
You know what, this isn't dirty laundry, this is $173,000 from our taxpayers that our taxpayers pay.
I want you to come up any time you want to speak, but.
You know what, you don't want me to come up here anytime.
If you have something positive, I'd love to have you come up.
You know what, Mr. Mayor, I know you wish everything was flowers, butterflies, and rainbows and unicorns, so do I, but you're not going to get it if you keep doing business with these kind of people.
We're moving forward, we're not doing it in the past.
Well, you can move forward all you want to, and I'm going to move up here and say what I'm going to say, and if you try to.
Thank you very much.
If you try to shut me down, Mr. Mayor, then you are not paying attention to the First Amendment, so you can't have it both ways.
Appreciate your comment.
I'm putting this $173,000 that the county paid Adam Albritton into the record. It's shameful.
But you said the right word, you said the county.
Yes.
You didn't say the city.
As, as he was a city attorney, conflict of interest. Where were you guys? Where were you? You knew you was working, didn't you, Brett? Yeah, you did. You're the HR person?
I'm not allowed personally.
I do not care what you're going to allow. This isn't personal, this is business. Chief?
Please, please, you said your word, thank you very much. Any other citizen like to be heard at this time? Okay, commissioners? I'm good, you're good, I'm fine, you're fine. Don't think I have anything else, so I'll entertain the most, do it, all right, we'll be adjourned.